If everyone always agrees to everything, and that never happens. And if everyone lives forever so that they can remember what Ron Humphrey told them in 1982, but that doesn't exist. So what we're left with as a community is an insufficient record of ownership of this sewer system. And right now, we're trying to rectify it. We're in our 10th year of trying to fix this. And the powers that be, Department of Natural Resources, who are directed by the EPA, are not going to give you a bunch of more chances. So that's where we stand legally. If the easements are not provided to us, given to us, the city will have to take steps to obtain those easements by eminent domain or continue to use the prescriptive easements. If it's done by eminent domain, it is going to cost the community a lot of money. It's going to cost a lot of aggravation. But that's the process. And the city has the authority to obtain those easements to provide for treatment of sewage. And you all should want that. Because without your sewer system, your property values will deteriorate. And if you are like me and most people, their biggest asset is their real estate. And the idea of not wanting to protect that asset is peculiar. And Isabella can give you a time, we'll give you a timeline from an engineering standpoint of where we are. And I, we received this long list of questions. I don't have any intention of going through these and answering them. They're, it's not capable of doing it. We don't have time to do it. I think our presentation should answer most of those questions. If there are some specific questions afterwards, I'll be happy to try to answer them from a legal perspective.
In 2014, around that time, the city was given a compliance schedule from DNR to permanent compliance with updated treatment limits. In addition to that, there were many issues throughout town of capacity. The city was not able to have a proper capacity for the flows coming through town, which was due to failing and aging infrastructure in the collection system, both undersized lift stations and then also deteriorated collection system and pipes. In addition to that, there were numerous grinder pumps put into town in areas and it was causing an operation and maintenance burden to the city. So in 2014, Iberia being a small community with limited funding, we worked with the city to get a DNR grant. It was a small community engineering assistance grant. And that was to start the process of doing preliminary engineering and treatment analysis to complete a facility plan. So in 2014, there was an application submitted and the city was awarded grant funding for that. And then in 2015, we began field studies and the preliminary engineering analysis on the treatment. Those studies at that time included flow monitoring at the lagoon. So all the influent flow coming into the lagoon, which at that time it was determined you all had a peaking factor of approximately 21. And DNR's peaking factor, anything above 2.5 is considered excessive. And that is additional, that's influent infiltration water coming into your treatment system that does not need to be treated. It's getting in there through defects and aging infrastructure. So in 2015, we began flow monitoring. That determined the peaking factor the system had. We completed manhole inspections, acoustic sounding, grinder pump evaluations. So going through town and evaluating all the grinder pumps, seeing which ones, what condition they were in. And then at that time, there were also multiple ones that were not operational. We did lift station evaluations on three lift stations. Multiple lift stations didn't have the redundant pumps required or pumping capacity to pump flows throughout town. And then we also did a treatment analysis as required by DNR on how the city was going to meet their compliance schedule. So one thing I didn't talk about in 2014, so the city had a compliance schedule that was a lot sooner than the compliance schedule in the Missouri State Operating Permit the city has right now. And we worked with the city and DNR and we put together a scheduled compliance that we construed with the city. That was how the city was going to achieve working on this collection system, reducing the I and I the city was seeing, improving lift stations and doing some additional evaluation on what needed to be fixed in the collection system. So that got the compliance schedule pushed back to 2031. So it gave the city sufficient time to increase rates and do some fixes before the treatment upgrades were going to be complete. And then in 2017, 2016, I don't think there was much work done. I know there was council meetings and discussions going on. And we were working on the preliminary engineering report and facility plan development still. And then in 2017, the preliminary engineering report was submitted to DNR with all the findings and recommendations. And early 2018 is when the facility plan was approved by DNR. As part of that facility plan wrapping up, TREC completed a Missouri Water and Wastewater Review Committee application. And that was taking the project funding costs from the report. And it was sending it to a committee with USDA, DNR, and CDBG. And that committee gets together and they put together a funding package and they send information to the city on what the city needs to do next step to get grant funding and then potential loan funding through these agencies. In addition to that, TREC presented a state revolving fund application. That is a grant loan program through Department of Natural Resources to fund these improvements. But that was not submitted. So in 2019, TREC followed up. We came to a council meeting and did a presentation, just reiterating that there was new council members, what that report had, reminded the city that there was a compliance schedule, there was grant funding available, and talked about funding options. These just, the funding, the recommendations in the report, as mentioned, between the lift stations, grinder pumps, treatment, collection system, is a lot of work for a small community. So we had a lot of meetings, working with the city, trying to figure out how do we want to prioritize this? You have your compliance schedule for your treatment upgrades, but in the process of all this, that's the last step in the process. You've got a lot of work and a lot of infrastructure that's getting, that's working before it gets to the treatment plant that also needs work. So worked on trying to maximize grant funding through these funding agencies and do these improvements that were necessary. In addition, so the city's got a few different lift stations, two of them under capacity. And one of them's located in a flood plain and has had issues of overflows that which can cause violations with DNR. And it was something that DNR was aware of. We started working on, I guess, alternative ways of funding these projects instead of going into a DNR grant loan because there was a bond required to go through that process. And it was just a large project. So we were just going to pick one of those projects that was a priority project that needed to get done, that had maximum grant funding. And SEMA had a pre-disaster mitigation grant. We worked with the city on putting together a notice of interest on that funding. And the city was invited to apply to receive that funding, but it was not accepted. So we continued, worked on 2022. So in 2018, the city got a SKEET grant through DNR. And we did the initial report from that. It was a small, it was a $62,500 project, which is a small group, small amount to do assessment on all the infrastructure the city had and to determine what areas of the collection system needed to be improved. So from there, you have two years that you can apply for a second grant that we worked with DNR on. And the city got a second Clean Water Engineering Report Grant to do additional investigation work and get updated project cost estimates. So the city was awarded additional grant money. And that was to complete smoke testing and then flow monitoring throughout town. As mentioned, there's lift stations throughout town. And to be able to design and give proper recommendations, we needed to know what flows were coming into those lift stations. So that was completed through another DNR grant. And then after that, we worked with the city to submit an updated SRF application with the updated project costs and determine what the funding package was going to look like for these improvements now that we have more information. In 2021, we continued working on that grant, doing field work and report work. We submitted, FEMA had a Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities grant that we worked with the city on, a very detailed application board for lift station improvements on West Main Lift Station and then also backup generators at the lift stations throughout town since that is not something the city currently has. But that was not some of the city was awarded grant money at that time. So from there, the city, the other's compliance schedule had all these recommendations, had got two DNR grants to do the assessment on this work. And you had clear recommendations. And at this time, there's also a lot of funding money coming into the system for water and wastewater projects. So in 2021, city council determined to move forward with these projects. And they put out a RFQ for engineering services. And TREC was selected for design services. In 2022 is when, so as part of these SRF projects, the city has to pass a bond to be able to take loans out on the system. And the city put on ballot a revenue bond for the water and wastewater systems. We held two town hall meetings, public meetings on February 21st and March 24th for the required bond election. And I know the city, we had put out a flyer that had a lot of information on the project costs, what the bond meant, why the bond was happening. And those were distributed throughout town. So from there, those meetings had extremely low turnout. One of them was streamed on Facebook just to try to get it in front of more people. In 2022 also, that was at the time, there was ARPA money coming in the system. So we submitted a ARPA application with the city to attempt to get grant funding for the whole project. But unfortunately, based on scoring in competitive grants and all the water and wastewater needs in the state, the city was not awarded any funds through ARPA. So we, at that time, continued. A lot of towns stopped applying for state revolving funds because they were thinking that everyone was going to get this ARPA money to fix their water and wastewater systems, which was a really limited pot of money when you know all the projects going on in the state and requirements throughout the state. The city decided to keep up with SRF and attempt again. And the city did get additional grant money on the intended use plan that DNR adopted, which was half a million dollars that is typical for those SRF projects, which is a really great grant right now. So it's typically up to 50/50 grant loans. And the city is 60/40 through DNR. And we'll go over some funding in a little bit with additional information. In 2022, preparing to, the bond is passed at this point. You've got your project recommendations and then you're entering into this SRF planning stage. But at that time, the city needs to determine how are they going to pay for these recommended improvements and undergoing this loan through DNR. So the city worked with Missouri Rural Water Association. They have a group that does rate studies for small communities, rural communities. So they, the city got a rate study complete for the recommended project costs. At that point, they looked at the city financials and determined where those rates needed to sit for the city to afford this project. Also, there's a lot of detail going into this. So there's some things I'm skipping over. But as one of the requirements for the funding, it's been determined that 2% of the median household income is the affordable amount of what a resident can pay throughout the state for user rates for water and sewer. So the city has to have their rates at 2% of the median household income in order to get CDBG funding, which CDBG funding is up to $750,000 to put toward the improvements. So the city in 2022, that was part of that analysis, on where they needed to be. But in order to improve the project and pay for the loans, the city did approve a rate increase to increase of $79 per 500 gallons. And I'll go into a little detail on how that's determined and what those numbers mean here in a minute. In 2022, the city started working with DA Davidson, a financial advisor of Missouri Department of Natural Resources and a bond council to obtain interim financing for planning and design phase services that would later on be refinanced through DNR's low interest direct loan program once the project is bid and contracts awarded. And that really plays into, the city has to plan and has to design services. But the way that the SRF projects are set up is that they don't give interim financing or loans or grants to the cities that don't have money to do the design services. So it's very typical for a community to take out interim financing to be able to fund the planning, survey, and design before these projects are bid. But that does get tied back into one single loan once the project is closed with DNR. Then when I say loan closing, that's what's, once it's bid, contracts awarded, you know the amounts of the project's going to be. It's all tied together so the city would have one payment. In 2022, we started working with the city on the planning and design. We did CCTV throughout town, the lines that were determined to need televising. And then we did additional smoke testing on a remaining portion of town that was not included in the engineering report grant report. In 2023 is when, so that's starting off your SRF project. The city worked with the financial advisor and completed a financial due diligence questionnaire that's get submitted to Missouri DNR accountants for review and their project group that's working on the project. So this was completed by DA Davidson. TREC, the city of financial advisors, and DNR started having progress meetings in 2023 to just stand help of financials. Once we got through design, we were submitting and submitting updated project costs to track where those were sitting. The Clean Water Engineering Report Grant, so that's second report grant in 2023, was approved by DNR. And we continued survey, design, and worked closely with the city and operators to determine what improvements we're going to be completing throughout town on the, both the treatment system and collection system, so lift stations and whatnot. And then here we are in 2024. We recently submitted a updated SRF application. So I've said that a lot, those are good for two years. But when project numbers change or to stay on the intended use plan for certain time periods, you have to get those resubmitted. So the city is on a timeline right now where this project has to be bid in June to be able to maintain the 60% grant funding through DNR. Or you're going to have to go off of this new application, which is likely to reduce it to 50% grant funding or less. We don't, those numbers aren't known. Those are just all estimates based on what's available at the time. So those applications are under review right now. Recently, we submitted plans and specifications to DNR for review. And we've received some feedback on those. So I think everything's on the timeline right now to meet the bid date as long as these easements get handled or items are adjusted. So as far as this project, it's a pretty large project. Small towns definitely need assistance to ensure that these projects are done on time, on budget, making sure that they're designed properly and the city's getting a system that they can maintain and manage later on. So as far as the project team, you've got the city, which is the owner, Lake of Azar's Water and Sewer. They're the wastewater treatment operators that we've been working with. TREC Design Group, where the engineering's been working on the project. We've been overseeing regulatory compliance with the city's compliance schedule, working with DNR, and then also funding assistance. And then as far as DNR, as part of the SRF project, you all have been working with the Financial Assistance Center, which are providing the grants, loans, engineering review, and analysis of the project along with their accountants and also permit enforcement. DA Davidson is the city's financial advisor and who assisted the city in interim financing. Gilmore and Bell is the bond council. And then we've got Missouri Department of Economic Development. They've got a Community Development Block Grant. So that is grant gap funding that the city's eligible for right now. So that is extra money going into the project.
What percentage on that?
It's just the $750,000. Lake of Azar Council of Governments, they're the CDBG grant administrator. So CDBG has specific requirements. And there's, they require a grant administrator to oversee those to ensure that the city's following all of them, all the requirements on that. Missouri Rural Water Association, that was the rate study that was complete. And then the city also worked with Midwest Assistance Program on early-stage project assistance and general city resources early on in the project. So there's been quite a few people overseeing the project and helping the city get to the stage they're at right now.
So has everybody got a copy of that or can we get a copy?
There's not, it is something, I, the council's got copies of these that you provided, requested. So project funding, the current project cost estimate based on the facility plan amendment that we completed this past April, updating those costs, is $7,013,474. And the funding package, the city has affordability and waterfouling incentive grants through DNR for $3.5 million. A CDBG grant of $750,000, which leaves the DNR direct low interest loan at $2.7 million. And then for these funding, DNR offers the option of 20-year or 30-year financing. I'm going to go over some rates here in a second. But I wanted to note that these rates are based on the 20-year financing. So right now, the current rate's based on the 2% median household income, which I will note that 2% did change in the last year or two. And it went up a little bit. So the rates right now are at 2% of the MHI and they are at $79 per 5,000 gallons. The rate is set at an amount required to obtain maximum grant funding. So as mentioned, CDBG requires that 2% MHI. And then the 5,000 gallons is an amount DNR uses as a basis for amount of water used each month. But the city on average is about a little over 3,800 gallons a month. So you are under that. So I know sometimes getting these presentations, you see a higher number, but that's not what most, most people aren't getting a bill for 5,000 gallons of use. So I've got here a proposed rate for a 20-year loan, which would be $81.34 for 5,000 gallons. So that is a dollar, or $2.34 more. And this is based on, based on this $2.7 million loan on DNR's financial analysis, which includes total project costs and project contingency. So that number, we're hoping that bids come back. We have contingency in there and that's what those rates would need to be raised to. But it's not necessarily determined right now that they will need to be raised at all. That's something the city did two years ago, doing a rate study to determine what those rates would need to be to begin the city. I don't know if you all were in the red at that point, but this was just getting the rates. And one thing I really like about going through these projects with small communities, most communities are in the red and they don't have money to operate, maintain, repair, replace, anything in the system. So as part of this project, this is something that's, that's also factored into your rates right now. And DNR has determined that you all, your guys' rates will be set at a spot where you have a certain percent to repair and replace each year. You're on more of a maintenance schedule. You have 100% debt service. You're repaying your loan. And then that also is factoring in all the expenses that's coming into the system. So one thing, I've got a number here on where the city's got all these issues. You have compliance with DNR. DNR has been to town. They, they know that there are overflows. They know that they know there's capacity issues. And you all have a scheduled compliance. So based on the easements that have not been acquired at this time, the rates would need to be raised to $109.57 if the city were to complete this work outside of this funding package that you all have right now and would total about just over $1.5 million lost in funding to not do it as part of grant funding. And right now, the city is maximizing grant funding where if you start cutting stuff out of the project now, you're going to be cutting it out of your grant. You're not going to be cutting it out of your loan. So that's a $28, $23, $23, $23 difference in monthly user rates. And then I can keep going. I've got a lot of information I brought here on the presentations that we did for the April bond election as far as why the bond was proposed, what happened if the bond wasn't passed, bond language, schedule compliance, state of the system, funding. So I'm going to go over a few of these items and then kind of see where you all have questions. So the bond in 2022 is on April 5th. And per the fact sheet that was put out by the city, this facts about the proposed bond, I'm going to go through these bullet points. The bond is needed for quickly approaching DNR current compliance, aging infrastructure, and not enough savings to fund the project or phase the project with city funds. Iberia's sewer system is aging and they need upgrades and we have to function at permit levels. The bond allows Iberia to be eligible for grant funding totaling $3.75 million, which the city now, based on the increased amount that you all got on your SRF intended use plan, is higher than that. The bond allows the city to form muted collection system. Just really important thing on elections. It proposed a user rate increase. It was not a tax increase. It was a revenue bond. And so this will be paid back through user rates. So if the bond did not pass, DNR could refer the city to enforcement action and/or fines up to $10,000 per day. The bond is going to have to go on the ballot again. The city has to do this work. And then forfeiting the grant money and having to fund the project out of city funds potentially, which would skyrocket the sewer rates. So I'm going to, I don't know, we don't need to get into the bond at this time. As far as a compliance schedule, when we started working with the city and we talked about working with DNR, getting a schedule together with the city can achieve to get to funding the treatment upgrades. It started in 2016. That was the first year of the milestones put together in this compliance schedule. And we started working with the city about 2020 to really start preparing for this SRF project. And the city had not done work for six years up until that point. So you all were already six years behind your compliance schedule that is in your Missouri operating permit. So it is something that DNR was regularly tracking and regularly keeping up with. As far as the collection system, we mentioned there's defects. So just for a few points, out of the 215 manholes inspected, we found 232 defects in manholes. Smoke testing was completed in the lift stations. So lift station inspections were completed in all lift stations. There was surcharging at two of those lift stations. So wastewater leaving those structures, one of them being near a creek. Pumps were down at multiple lift stations and there's no backup power source. As far, so in 2022, at this, the project cost was $6.85 million. So over the years, it has gone up a little bit. And there was one finding, so a big piece of this project was the, at the looking there was determined that the liner was going to need to be rehabbed just based on the age and material of that. So that's been included in the project. So overall, the project cost has stayed relatively close for how, I guess, what's been added and then also the years that have been leading up to now. The funding sources have not changed. The only thing that's changed on that is that the city got a half a million additional funds from DNR in grant funding. And then presented to the, the interest rates right now are about 1.3% for DNR's low interest loans. And then as far as, we went over the user rates. I think that is most of all I have.
The only other thing I didn't see, he didn't say anything, kind of what we plan on saving by upgrading the sewer by not having these lift stations.
Yeah, so having the grinder stations, based on when we were doing the engineering reports and review of what the city spent on these grinder stations and then maintenance due to those, it was averaging $50,000 per year between grinder pumps and lift station maintenance. And that is significant. Right now, you've got pumps that are continually trying to keep up with flows that they can't handle and don't have redundant pumps. Those are all requirements for properly.
And we have pumps that's pumping downhill instead of uphill like a pump is designed. The way the system was designed, and it's like we're spending money on electric and everything else, maintaining these pumps when it could be done by gravity. And this is what this project is to do.
Each time one of these pumps fails, it costs the city $3,500 bucks just for a pump. And it wouldn't matter. Or more than that.
And it is something typically, these grinder stations are in pumps of service laterals. And correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the city's taking on, they've been working with the residents due to the system that was put in to make sure you all have, I guess, a proper payment structure to get to the home, to the system. And the city is working on these. And typically, that is something that would be on the property owner to fix these things.
Yes. There's lots of grinder, grinder stations per one home. That's, could be actually potentially for the homeowner instead of the city. But the city is covering the cost of that and the maintenance.
Bobby here, Bobby Hope, he's, he's worked with the city often, over several years. And he is our chief operator right now.
I work with Lake of Azar Water and Sewer, take care of your guys' water and wastewater stuff right now while, because the city, they don't have anybody right now to run it. So they contracted us out to do that. And like they were saying, we're basically operating on a razor's edge on your lagoon, trying to meet these BOD permit stuff that they're putting out now. They're lowering it by 15 now on your BOD, which biochemical oxygen demand out there, you're really scrambling to keep it where it's at. So I mean, guys are going to have to do something with that plant. It's going to have to have some kind of upgrade to it regardless from one way or the other.
Did you have anything?
I think it was pretty much covered. I mean, just reiterating that, I mean, these are needed and this is your opportunity. You've given a lot of grant money right now. And if you let it go, then you'll probably never be able to afford these upgrades.
As it sits, we're at 3.75 for a million.
More. So it would be 400, $4,250,000 now.
And that's against the seven?
Yes. So you would have 2.7 million would be your loan amount on a $7 million project.
That's not bad.
That is, that is not something you probably will go around and see anyone else have.
So we'll kind of take it. Obviously, everybody can't talk at once, but if someone wants to raise your hand, if you have a question, we'll try to answer specific question.
I've got a couple. When was the June deadline? When, when was that set?
The June deadline on that?
That we keep hearing about that everything has to be approved by?
So that is, but right now, working with DNR, we're looking at the second, third week of June to get this bid.
When, when did the city and/or the designers and/or the finance people know there was a deadline in June?
Back, I, I guess when we started the SRF process on those applications.
Month ago, year ago, 10 years ago?
Two years ago.
Okay. When, when was the alignment determined by the designers?
Last fall.
When was it?
Last fall. We started having meetings with the city.
So I'm here with this, as a member of the school board. We got a paper last month because we only meet once a month. It said, we need this easement immediately. That doesn't seem like the best way to do business.
No. And as far as that goes, so you've got a very tight turnaround on these SRF projects, meeting these funding requirements. And then in addition to that, so survey and design is complete. We started having meetings with the city. This project has signif-, there's a lot of scope items on this project. So between this DNR deadline and when all this works completely, working with the city, seeing where these alignments were going and adjusting them, there are.
Seven drought tones, seven?
Looking at those, having to draft easement documents and whatnot. It, it is something that wasn't a tight, tight turnaround, which.
It isn't that we didn't want to have a year to meet with everyone, but the, the state and SRF gives us precious little time to do that. And it would have been way better if we could have met with every easement that we needed a year in advance. But we didn't have that kind of time. It, it, by the time the final design is done and we know exactly where those need to go, it's, it's a very narrow window. And it does appear, heavy-handed, I guess, that when we ask with such little time. I do a lot of this. And so the easements that we're asking for, for the very most part, are not for easements that you, we are not already using. There's already pipes in the ground for many of these. Now, maybe not for the school district. I'm sure there are some that there aren't. But we received the, a, a red line copy from, from your attorney and, and I approved it last week and we didn't hear anything. I said, fine, whatever you all want from us, we'll give it to you. I, I thought, I, I, if we had more time, I would explain why you didn't need the red line. But it's fine. So, you know, last week, your lawyer sent it to us and I approved it and we haven't heard anything back. So I understand it. You've got, you only meet once a month. You, you don't hit it individual authority. You've got, you're a board, you know, you gotta get everybody together.
And on this, so one of the deadlines, so on lots of these projects, a lot of the time, those SRF applications, they get carried through through additional fiscal year because it is not common that they get complete in two years from planning to design stage and then bidding. So having a bigger project and then in there, you're accounting for DNR 60 to 90 day review periods. And with the city's funding package, that's the big deadline right now. It's typically on most projects, you could push it another year and have more time for those easements. But in this case, you're going to lose significant grant funding doing that because you do have a very atypical funding package.
Isabella is being understated at the amount of additional funding that Iberia is getting. It is, I have never seen this amount of, and I don't, maybe you have some more. This amount, this percentage of funding, which means every dollar that we get for that is a dollar you save. And so our persistence in seeking these easements is not, her company doesn't benefit from that. I don't benefit from it. It's really, it saves you all money by us, you know, we're asking in a hurry.
So from my perspective, you're asking me to make 120 feet of the school's property useless for future development because we didn't find out about this project and where your design.
You were here on March 18th.
Yeah, we.
You personally were here on March 18th talking about this easement.
Yes, you, you are correct. And, and I made it clear that I'm one voice on a board. That, that alignment doesn't seem reasonable to me. And if, and if that is proposed, you know, there needs to be some sound economic and engineering information provided with that request to cut across the middle of that field. So, so I was here and I did try to, to bring that up. But we heard at the board that the city was going to be asking for an easement. We didn't see the paper until last Tuesday.
But I, I thought meeting, we had worked through that line segment on the aerial map.
I wasn't at the meeting. Was there a map of it all at the meeting?
Yes, we had a plan set with an aerial map.
No, we were, no, we were there. We were given the same.
We were given the same answer.
Same things happening to us. It's coming to the middle of our property.
We spoke with both of those groups and we had a plan set there, a black white plan set, construction plan set, a plan set with the plan set and an aerial laid behind it. And then we also had the easement documents that had on it.
With the contract and everything.
Property lines.
No.
The contract was not, it was easement displays because we wanted to meet with the property owners and to give them an opportunity to speak with us.
Did you meet with the property owners?
The ones that attended that meeting, yes.
So which property owners did you meet with physically?
I personally, not names, the gentleman from the school board, I had spoke with him. I had spoke with Steve Perkins and then I had spoke with.
You spoke with us, but you didn't give us any documents.
No aerial map or anything.
No aerial map.
I had it up there on the TV. I had it in front of me down.
You couldn't even tell us where it was at.
You couldn't find it.
We located that. I brought all the maps if you wanted tonight so we can look at them.
We can go through them. But, but we did have on there, I flipped to the pages and I, I don't know if you all looked at them, but they were opened up on those.
I want to just clarify one. One, this has been financially and engineering wise done. I mean, you've heard this presentation. We've been doing this for quite a while. I will also say, I disagree with the, the notion that the easement makes the property useless. It, it would, it could restrict certain developments, but it does not mean that that property can't be developed and that it can't be developed around the sewer line or even over the sewer line under certain circumstances. I have done personally dozens of exceptions to property being, or structures being built over sewer lines. So I, I mean, I understand your concern, but the idea that somehow this easement makes that property unusable is an overstatement because it, it just doesn't.
I just felt like it over restricts the school's ability to develop in the future with no, no reasonable warning or request to work out a comparable.
It does not over restrict. It definitely does restrict. But I would, I would, I just, I respectfully disagree that it over restricts.
I get, I'm on the school board getting, I just got thrown into this last week when I first heard about it. But say, and this is just hypothetical, say your sewer line goes through a field that we might plan on putting a soccer field or a track.
Absolutely appropriate.
I mean, and if something happens, does the school pay for that track to be fixed when it's, needs dug up or does the city?
So it depends on.
Because if it's your right of way, I mean, yens should have to, I, I know we work for road district. And if we get on somebody's property, we are responsible for fixing how we left it.
There's already a line there, correct? Yes.
Yeah. Not portion of that.
Yeah, not the whole thing. Are we, yes, we're responsible for putting the property back the way it was.
And if that means, I mean, again, this is just looking 20 years down the road, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just, if, if the track is, you know, the turf or whatever, that yens will take care of all that stuff and it will be how it was before you started.
I can tell you that I believe on this day in 2024, that's our responsibility. I don't know what some lawyer 20 years from now would say because I'm not going to be here. But, but I, and it's, this is being recorded. So like you make a record of it that this lawyer on this day said that. But again, like I said, in, in 2048, whoever the city attorney is might say, we're not doing it. And then.
Or who the city, you know, who the city is.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, but, but that is my opinion and position right now. And again, I, I, I know you didn't get a ton of notice. I mean, I wish you would, there would have been more. This is the way that these, that the process works. We really have tried to have many meetings. I know these folks have gone out and knocked on individual doors to talk to people.
And as part of the sewer extensions and the force mains as well, we're tied into existing infrastructure. So you, as far as engineering and determining where these lines are going, you're, you're looking at elevations of existing infrastructure and doing stuff as affordable as possible and then what is feasible. So all that's taken into account of where these are being placed.
And I, and again, I understand that completely. I just don't want the school to give a piece of property up that if we're planning on using that in the future, oh, well, you give it to the city for right of way, we can't use it. That's, that's where I'm coming from. And that's my question. I mean, is it usable or no?
Just so like right of way is very different. So we're, we're getting an easement and, and right of way is, is very, it's a very different term. It's a very different legal concept. Our easement, when you get an easement, it is limited to that use. Right of way, you're giving away the property. That's not what is happening here. You are not giving away your property.
Yeah, and I understand that, yeah.
So, so is there, is there some restriction? Yeah. If we put a sewer line in there and then that's where the school wants to drill for its goalpost, we're going to have a problem. But like, is that something that at some hypothetical time in the future, that would be impossible for us to work around? I would feel very sad if, if that's the thing that, you know, we can't figure out another place to put the goalpost or how to put it in. But that's the kind of restriction that we're, we're talking about. And again, just to kind of go back, the city already owns some of these easements. They're not, they're not recorded. They're, they're not in writing. Our sewer lines are there and we own them. Just, just like the, the concept of adverse possession where you can take somebody's property because you've used it for a period of time. The fact that those sewer lines have laid there for 10 years and one day makes the city the owner of that easement. So we already do own it. So, so the school, school's property may already be somewhat restricted.
Why, why is there not an easement?
Because no, because nobody did it in, in the eighties. Because I suspect, and I, and I don't, I feel like I have hard enough time practicing law. I shouldn't practice psychology. But I suspect that.
You mean the whole system was put in this town with no easements?
Much, much of it.
Yeah.
Your grandfather dinner or something.
It, it is. It's a, yeah. And, and I suspect it was because people knew each other and people shake hands and say, I, I represent several sewer districts and this isn't the only community where this is. I mean, it's, it's very common that a farmer somewhere knows the guy from the, the guy who actually goes out, he knows him. She says, hey, I want to, hey Bill, I want to put this sewer. And he goes, yeah, sure. Put it over here in between the, the trough and the hay bale. And that's where it goes. And, and there's never a written document. Now, from a lawyering perspective, it terrifies me. From a, you know, like a human perspective, I wish our whole universe could operate that way, where people could shake hands and do things. But, but 45 years later, here we find ourselves, you know, without recorded easements. And we, we both have licenses and we are obligated to do this the right way. Like I, I, I can't put my stamp of my lawyering opinion letter saying, yeah, just go ahead and do it however you want. She can't do that from an engineering standpoint. Like I think we can. So anyway, that's.
What does eminent domain mean?
Eminent domain is what some people would call condemnation. But eminent domain is the actual legal term for a, the government taking your property. That's, that's the concept of.
That's the letter I got to go for public use.
For public use. Correct. And a sewer system is the ultimate public use. And the reason that that letter went out is that the law currently requires that before the eminent domain process can start, you have to send out a 60-day letter and a 30-day letter, or you can actually do the 30-day letter and the 60-day letter. But usually you do two. And that's how the clock starts ticking. So because of the timeframes, when we ran, ran into situations where people are objecting to the easement contribution and have said, we are not going to do this, the only other step that the city has is to either begin the eminent domain process or abandon the project, which means you will be subject to DNR compliance issues that you won't be able to meet. So that's up to this board. If this, if this Board of Aldermen says, we do not want to take anyone's property for this project. We, we would prefer to be in violation of DNR regulations. That's no skin off my nose. But I, I, it would not, it would be over my advice. I mean, I would, I would go on the record as saying, I think that's not a good idea.
Point of fact, eminent domain does not necessarily take the property. Grants of heat, they can grant easements.
So.
You can still own the property.
Absolutely. And I, and.
No, it's confusing.
We're both right. So it actually takes the easement. It does not take the fee. So your property is, is a bundle of things. You have the right to own your property. You have the right to use your property. You have the right to rent your property. You have the right to license your property. You have the opportunity to, to, to grant easements. So those are all different sticks that you own. What we're talking about is the eminent domain of one of those, which is an easement. Nothing in this project is seeking to take anyone's fee or their entire property. All we're, all we need in this situation is an easement. So you're, I mean, you are correct, but it, from a, from a legal perspective, we would be taking the easement instead of you granting it.
Yeah, but the way you ordered it, it sounded.
Yeah, I apologize. It was, I was being too, I was being too lawyer. But you are, you're right. I mean, we're not, we're not taking the fee. We're not taking your property.
Are there things built into this design, and this is not me personally, this, a general question, that if you're going close to somebody and there's rock or something you hit the blast and damages their house, who's paying for that?
So if, if, yes, it, it is, I know, I've, I've had that question quite often. I've actually never had anybody's property knock on wood damaged by that kind of, so it ultimately, it ultimately would be damage that would be covered by someone. Usually, usually it's the, usually it's the contractor. So blasting is heavily, blasting is a heavily regulated operation. So if there is not a local fire authority that manages blasting, which in a lot of rural Missouri, there isn't, there's a state agency that regulates blasting. And before any blasting occurs, all of those blasting numbers are submitted to the agency to demonstrate that we'll only do what it needs to do. And most recently, my experience has been in awe, in order to avoid that situation, that, that, that the rock is, is jackhammered and not.
One of the things throughout the project, I don't, I don't know if everyone's aware of, is that through this, geotechnical investigations were complete and there were borings taken along these sewer extensions and these force mains.
Isabel, will you tell them what that means? So they understand that?
So, yeah, so that, that boring samples were taken to determine what, what layer of soil and rocks are. So we do have those in the plan sets of the type of rock and level of rock. And from my understanding, looking at these, we're, we're above any rock that would need to be blasted. The borings that were taken, those do get expensive. So we did not bore along all these routes. We, we took a boring along each route.
Just one question on that. How, how far is that boring good for? So say if I, if you bored on that side of the wall and over here is what we're going through, is that going to say that this isn't going to be rock over here or is it just for that, that certain area?
It's, well, for that bore, you're only certain of that certain area. And we took, so the borings were below, I think.
But if you put them together, you can get a, a general engineer, you know, but, but I have been in situations where borings here and here have been fine and there's a rock right in the middle.
And where, where these lines are going in near homes, I believe, I don't want to say incorrectly, but from, I know that where, where the concerns are coming from, those are lines that are not going, they're force main lines. So they're only going to be three and a half feet deep where.
You told us ours would be 20 feet.
That was the gravity determined.
But you still have to get 20 feet deep.
They both got to go in there.
On the.
Because it's gravity and we have. Cause it's gravity and we have a...
We're not dropping the gravity.
Yeah, we're changing on your property.
Yeah, you are.
We revised and we're not doing gravity.
The, the gravity extension that we had talked with you all about, that you said that you wanted to take off there from those two grinder stations on the north property...
You took those off, but you're gonna be right beside our house, we said some solid rock.
You asked for 20-foot more easement. You got a 15-foot easement and you're asking for 20-foot more and it's going right against our foundation.
That's 35 feet wide. You won't even be able to walk from our house to our garage. Yes.
When I built my house, it was on solid rock, the basement at 7...
And there will be any digging up against, that's a temporary easement. That's just work when they're digging for...
I talked to operators that do these every day, and they said, "If you're digging 20-foot deep, you're gonna have, you gotta go down several feet with your machine and then dig down to reach the bottom to get to 20 feet."
Stair step it.
Stair step it. And you gotta put all the, all the bridging in.
We're not going 20 feet deep at that location. Again, at that time, that was, that was that gravity extension that was proposed that we've removed. So now we're taking your service lateral, which you have a service lateral from the grinder station to the existing gravity. So that'll be replaced from the grinder station and bringing that into, I get, that, that gravity station, I guess, will just be removed.
The grinder pump.
So where's my sewer? If you don't go 20-foot deep, you're not gonna be able to...
So that was for the other two grinder stations on the other property north, not, not your residence grinder station. There's the two on the north parcels, north of your house, and that was what was going to the property that, that you all weren't wanting. So we removed that since, since there's no home up there that would utilize that.
There's two other houses in the same lines you're replacing, and you can't, you can't pick the other one up. It's lower than what we are.
Which one is that?
The Witz house.
The Witz.
There, we've got a map. So there, yeah, we can look at, is that what's east of your property?
I guess I...
And they're, they're connected to the gravity system already. They don't have a grinder station.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
They most certainly do.
Where the fence is.
That's what you told me.
The fence in the playground.
Oh, they are, they are, we cannot remove their grinder station.
Yeah.
Well, when they moved and had them sign their papers, they told us that they were gonna dig 20-foot in the ground on theirs, too.
No, we're only putting a force main there, and that's three and a half feet deep.
Their grinder can't be removed. Miscommunication, because we picked our house, you told us you were digging 20-feet deep right...
That was originally for that gravity sewer extension, that's been removed.
Well, how come you didn't get back with us on it?
I didn't. Well, I always thought that had been relayed, that that was being removed.
Well, so which, why are they widening from 15-foot easement to 35?
That's a disatemp, so the permanent easement's that 15-foot easement, and that's, that is what...
So, so the reason, one of the problems that we have with these prescriptive easements is they are literally the physical location of the pipe. No proper maintenance and repair can occur with, with that little space. So what we ask for is, is temporary construction easements, so that while the project is being done, we can get off of that 15 feet by a little bit, so that when there's a backhoe or, or an employee who steps off of the, of the permanent easement, they're on a temporary construction easement, so that they're not trespassing on your property. That temporary construction easement disappears when the project is done. It goes away. We are no longer allowed to use that.
They need to sign easement if you're gonna forcefully take it anywhere.
Well, well, because, because of the cost. Because in order, in order for...
You're gonna take it anywhere.
Well, that's true. I mean, so...
I don't think, that's not the preferred method.
That's not the preferred method. I don't...
Because on that line, the system has a under-capacity force main and lift station. So to, right now, that's overflowing and is right next to a creek and those manholes back up.
So if they don't sign it, you're not gonna take the property.
That's up to the Board of Aldermen. My recommendation...
So you're gonna take the property.
That would be my recommendation, yes.
It's putting the city out.
The city is at risk. I, as Isabella said so eloquently, it is not the preferred method. The preferred method is for the granted easements. I don't want to take anybody's property. You shouldn't want me to do that, because every one of the dollars that you pay me to do that, and that's, I'm the only one that makes money on this deal, and I don't wanna do it. But every dollar you pay me, every one of you is gonna pay me back, because your sewer rates are gonna go up, because all of that...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and it will continue. This isn't, so you all are paying 1980 sewer rates. I know that doesn't feel good, but you've been getting by for a really long time on a failing system. And, and your, your city and your staff and your elected officials, one of whom was Jim, had done a really good job with the duct tape and the spit and the staples keeping this thing together. But you got caught, and, and there's a record of you getting caught. And the, and the state gave us till 2031 to get this done. I was here the day we found out about that, and we thought it was a miracle that they weren't shutting us down, and we had a, we had an opportunity to fix this. I don't, I, this, this city has the authority to take your property to make this project go through. Doing that only does two things. Delays the process, well, three things. Delays the process, causes you to lose grant funding, which is free, grant means free, and costs you more money. So you delay, lose, and cost. But it's, but, but it's up, you know, it's, it's not up to me.
So my understanding with eminent domain is that normally the government will pay you for that.
That is true.
But you're asking them to donate it by signing that paper.
That is exactly right. And the reason that I'm asking that is that every dollar I pay to them, you have to pay them back, because the dollars that go into buying your easement, and you have every right to be paid for your easement. We are, you are correct. We are asking you for a donation. We are asking you for a contribution. I am asking you, as the city attorney, out of the kindness of your heart, to donate this property, because I believe it is in the, it is in the good of your entire community to have this system, that your grant of this easement helps you and your community. It provides you, it provides you the opportunity to have a, a properly working sanitary sewer system that improves your property values. But you are absolutely 100% right. You are entitled to money for your, for your easement.
But it sounds to me like that their house is being put in jeopardy if it's that close to their foundation.
Well, I mean, I, I would disagree with that. I, I mean, everyone, this, everyone sewer lateral connects to their house, and I, that's never caused a problem that I'm aware of. If, if someone, I don't think it's gonna be 20 feet deep.
Not 10 feet.
They're only doing that 3 and 1/2 feet.
And there's a thing, the same service lateral tying into the...
I'm worried about it.
We're not opposed to signing the easement, we're just opposed to the damage that's gonna potentially due to our home, which we were told you were gonna dig 20 feet deep.
So I will...
New evidence, it's drawn new light to it correctly.
In addition, if, if this project, you know, again, I don't want, you wouldn't wanna have to do this, but, but if this project damaged your home, you would have a cause of action. Like, you know, that easement doesn't give the city the right to damage your property, your home.
But there's an alternate route, but it wouldn't damage our property, and there's future lots out there, they're in, gonna be developed in the future, and you're gonna have to rent it out there anyway. So why not move it over or where you can develop in the future?
I mean, I would say, generally speaking, in my experience with regard to that, is that it's an engineering issue and a cost issue.
And that's our question. I mean, that's our issue.
And that if there is future development, I mean, one of the things that you can require is that that future developer pay that cost. That's the way it should be done.
We own the land. We are, we would be the future developer.
Well, I mean, but then, I would say if you develop that land and burden the system, you should pay for the upgrade to that.
But you neglected to run it out there in the first place. Why should we have to pay to run sewer when you were doing this upgrade and didn't put it out there to...
That was originally, are you talking about the one north of the property?
Right where the garages are, where we drove in at on the right hand.
On that, that was originally in the plan, and due to having to dig a sewer system as deep as it would need to be, at that meeting, it was determined to be taken out, because...
It's not just our land, though. There's more acreage, two different owners on more acreage in the future.
And that, that can be put in, but that, that would require that sewer be...
Actually, the city owns part of it. Why wouldn't they go on their own property instead of taking somebody else's?
For the force main?
No, for the gravity line over there.
Where the lines already laid at?
No, it's on the back, on the backside.
I think you're thinking of the, the, those interceptors coming into the lagoons.
Well, we're proposing for it to run.
You're proposing it to come off the city of where the lagoons is, instead of come on the backside of the Witz.
Yeah, come on the lower side.
But with that, it was over a $60,000 influx to the project. Don't quote me on that number, somewhere around that area.
And that's, and that's a force main. You have to understand, you cannot connect to a force main unless you construct a pump station.
With all the gravity flow there.
A force main, the gravity flow right now is...
The thing is, that, that force main is pumping all that southwest face, the entire southwest face, and so approximately a third of town gets pumped, that pump station. So it grab, your area where you live, gravity feeds to west main lift station, and then from there gets pumped through. So the alternatives to bring on those two grinder stations that are northeast of your home, you'd have to either dig that sewer, I, I don't know if it's exactly point, I'm assuming, if that's what we told you at the, it's what it is. It's either digging that gravity sewer deeper and installing it, or, like she said, putting in another pump station to tie those directly to the force main, which would be an additional cost.
Now, is there a blueprint, a surety blueprint of what you're proposing? I'm sure somebody's drawn some, some paperwork that everybody can inspect and look over.
Yes.
And why, it looks like this is a simple solution. If, if you need the easements to put the pipe, because no other city maintains those easements. Whenever, I can tell you Sedalia, I can tell you Waynesville, St. Roberts, when they bore the, put the sewer pipes in, they're from, when they hooked it up, then they only own the part that's on the city property, then it's donated back to the, back to the homeowner. If something happens to that pipe, that's on the homeowner. And she's got property all over the state of Missouri, and I can tell you, none of them work like this. Not one of them.
That's the lateral. So you're right, the sewer, the sewer laterals are the responsibility of the homeowner. But what we're talking about is not laterals, we're talking about sewer mains, which the sewer authority, in this case, the city of Iberia, maintains as long as there's a sewer system.
Yeah, we would normally run on, like, just like, like, next to the property down here, she's got other properties here and down. Would run out in the street or on city property, and then they would hook it up, but that property that they hooked up to and what they had to do to dig it, and that, that's granted right back to the homeowner, and that's their responsibility. It has nothing to do with the city, it's not theirs, it's, it's no different than what it is proper.
You're correct, that's lateral lines. Lateral lines, that's the way all city systems work.
Well, I think I put most everybody here, like...
No, this is a main, this is a main sewer line.
Hook up on their property, which I know, in other cases, it does. Then, then of course, it would have to be some sort of...
We are taking out the grinder pumps and installing the lateral, and then they are going to own that lateral, right?
Yes, but if the, if the grinder station is stuck out, then we are replacing the lateral line to the homeowner, and that will be given back to the homeowner. But what we're talking about, for the most part, is the main sewer line. It's not the lateral line, it is the main sewer line.
It's under pressure.
Pressurized and grounded.
I'd take that. About the project, the components that would just get removed from this and then won't be completed, and then is leaving the city at risk of having a system that is in bottulation.
But the project needs to get bid soon, the project starts.
And then the project would start, you have, like, you would go right into notice to proceed to contractor once that contract signs. So the loan would have to be closed with DNR in September, and then after that, notice to proceed to contractor would be...
2025.
And we'll have solid...
That's what I'm asking for, like a time, like a timeline.
But another, you know, another one of these things that, again, it's, it's nothing that I'm hiding from you, but that you have no interest in. I can't, I have to provide certification that the city has the authority to move forward.
Yeah, we don't have, back there in the back.
If we don't have easements, I can't do that.
If mine is a simple one.
Okay.
I'm hearing everybody getting letters, do us up on Mockingbird Hill or Lombard Street not get letters? We don't, we haven't heard of that letter.
There's nothing, there's nothing I don't believe up there.
I don't think there's anything up there on you.
That's what I was wondering.
I, I do not like this one bit. I don't like the government half the time, but here we are. This is the set of rules that we have to comply with. This is the only way we can proceed.
But how about a ways of...
I think if you could handle it completely different, my first...
Instead of like, we could have...
Do things differently.
Here, sign us.
Yeah. I understand where you're going with it.
Nothing in the mail, no.
You guys have squandered a lot of time.
Yep.
The way you've treated people.
And I know it's been, it's kinda worked.
I have worked for many years as a right-of-way agent, buying right-of-way easements. I would never, ever have called up somebody and said, "I'm gonna bring these papers by and let you sign them." That's just not the way to do it.
And we are sorry.
Well, we never just dumped these papers on people. We went around...
That's the point I'm saying, but, I'm saying that's the wrong approach, you should say. I'd like to come by, let you look these papers and explain them. And that's what people want. They don't, and I mean, I'm relying, you're hoping that people won't read them, you're hoping that people won't ask questions, and a certain amount of people won't do that.
I was wishing this would have been done 40 years ago, and we wouldn't all be sitting in here doing this right now, because if this was done correctly the first time it was done, we wouldn't be here talking about this, because it would be done right.
Six months ago would have worked, too.
Forty years ago would have won the initial line went in, too.
Yeah.
Now, there are other grants, I'm not for sure how, you sound like you're pretty familiar, but there's Blighty Community. And if you wanna contact Johnson and to Sedalia, that's all he does is grants for, for, I mean, he does millions, he done $35,000 one the other day for Sedalia. I mean, that's all, that's all he does up there is for grants. But I know, know for Blighty Community, you have somebody come in and say, "Yeah, there's a bunch of work need to be done," and we're sure there's gonna be one of them. And like I said, it's not just DNR, there's a whole bunch of other grants that they can apply for.
All right, thank you. The Lord, Whittle, I have, we haven't heard from you. Mr. Whittle? Mr. Whittle, we haven't heard from you. I was trying to make sure everybody that's on this list gets a chance to speak.
Travis has been great to work with. Travis has been good to work with.
We know how, where we should be spending our money, that's why we are elected officials sitting on this board, to try to do the best for our community that we know how.
But you hired somebody to advise you, and I'm not saying he did a poor job. I'm just saying, who is the one that could have given you the...
Isabella, Confeder, we all could have...
And so we had an easement where Bob was in the meeting, Ed was in the meeting, Holly was in the meeting, I believe Travis was in the meeting, Jennifer and I were in the meeting. And we discussed easements. We got together, and this was earlier this year, right before you all got your documents. And we got together and went to the plan set, looked at all the alignments, we took in city comments, because that was something that they reviewed, and there were areas changed there, and we did look at different properties. Hey, there's a line here, could we put it here? And said, lots of times, no, we already looked at that, and it's just based on the existing system. And in that meeting, we talked about how we were going to go about acquiring easements. And the determination at that meeting was, yeah, is Bob gonna do it? Is Trek going to do it? Is the city going to do it? And I think the city expected, based on like, uh-
Yeah, I know.
-Bob said, um, that this bond passed 95%, we were thinking that the city's got trust in the community, it's going to be best if people that you all know are coming to you to talk to you face to face.
Yes.
And not necessarily, Sarah, people don't like getting easement documents in the mail,